My name is Scott Moore. I'm the mayor for the city of Birmingham and I see out here a lot of familiar faces. Some I don't know, but for the most part, folks that have been around here for a long, long time. And I recognize those that certainly have taken an active interest into the affairs of Birmingham to ensure our quality of life and what we are as a community. And tonight, we have our guest, Andreas Dewaney. I first met Andreas 18 years ago. I was on the city commission that brought him here and that formulated the 2016 plan. And it was fascinating to see Andreas because, you know, he doesn't look much different. And I finally figured it out. I was thinking about this and it's because, you see, he doesn't have to implement his plans. I used to be six foot two and had a full head of hair. And so, thank you very much, Andreas. It's worked out well. We're here tonight to reflect on what we have done. And I'm sure Andreas will say the same. It's rare that any city takes on a plan as with the breadth of this plan and actually implements it. Oh, yes, there's a few things that need to be tidied up, one project that should happen. But in reality, I think we need to congratulate ourselves. And I need to congratulate those citizens, boards, committees, certainly every commission that I have served upon, that despite the bumps in the road, despite those who said no, despite the fear that comes with any change, as a community, at the end of the day, we said yes. And I think we need to congratulate ourselves. So tonight, we do reflect on our past, but tonight, we're also going to know this isn't going to be a 2035 plan. But it is going to be, I hope, the beginning of now a lens that looks to our future, not our past. It's a lens that's going to look to another generation called the millennials, who are going to be our city. They're going to be our leaders. They're going to be Birmingham. Tonight, our lens, we need to put on that lens. No, it's not a plan, but I hope it's the beginning of that spirit of tomorrow. Andreas, come on up. Thank you so much.
Well, wow, thank you very much. Beautifully said and very accurate. And this is a very orderly place. Do you realize this has an exact number of people and chairs in this room? How'd you do that, Mayor? Amazing. I mean, really, there are two people standing up and two empty chairs. So quite an achievement. You're all on time, which is slightly worrisome. Actually, what the mayor said, I mean, I could repeat that, but I don't need to. It was a plan that's 18 years old. It was done in many ways in all innocence. I was an innocent. I knew a few things, but I was an innocent. I was trusted and I was very guided by some of you. I was and I continue to be a good listener, and I think that's the essence of it. And the reason for this, my visit here today, which is a professional visit, and I've been here three days, easily nine, 12 hours a day on it, is that I have been asked questions over the years about this and that and this and that. And I gradually lost knowledge of the city. I could no longer help. You know, when you phoned me, I said, "Well, I really don't know what's going on. I haven't seen your park. I haven't seen this or that." And so, I was asked to come back, speak to quite a few people, and also walk around and see what was going on. So the report that I have is actually much better founded than any advice I may have given over the years. I really know what has happened here, but also, I don't know as much as you do. You know, I really don't. It's almost impossible to do so, but I can project the future because that's more and more, as I've been in the planning field, I realize that it's all about the future. And I can't really help you in the present because, as I said, you help yourselves. You have incredibly good leadership and very good technical help with your planning department and the people who take care of your downtown, really very good. But I can actually help you project the future and what might be coming. Mostly, it's exceptionally good news, both what I see here and what's coming. Okay? So that's, you know, and so, whatever might sound like criticism, it is within the context of a really great success. And I've been thinking, as the mayor spoke, how many plans that I've done, and there've been quite a few, that have been as successful as this categorically by any measure. And this is, I can't think of another that's even close to the degree of implementation that happened here. I mean, not even close. It's stunning. I don't think you know how much was done because you grew up with it. You know, I don't think you remember the places that were empty and the shop fronts that were empty and the sites that were happening and so forth. And my first suggestion is at least by the 20th anniversary of the plan, that you do a very good before and after publication. You know, what it was like, what were the empty lots, any photographs that you might have of the time, till you really see what was done. Because unlike the new towns that I designed, that are very well-known because there was nothing and now there's there, right? And children and high schools and all sorts of incredible stuff. You don't know, when you work in an existing city, you really don't know because it happens slowly. But I'm just stunned. I'm still saying, "Wow, look at that. And do you remember when that was this and et cetera?" So congratulations, congratulations. I'm very proud of you. And, you know, it was great. So, you don't, you may not know my method, but what I do is I stir the pot. You know, I really want to find out what's going on. If I see anything that's a problem, I actually worry it. You know, I stir it up. I stir it up to see what comes up for examination. So this wasn't a group hug, okay? Which is, I think there's entirely too much group hugging that goes on in American urban planning. You're okay, you're, actually, you're not okay. Mostly, you're not okay. Now, this had extraordinary beginnings, really extraordinary beginnings, which are not entirely explainable. And I'm going to try to give as orderly a presentation as I can today. It can be all over the place, planning is apples and oranges, we're trying to be orderly. And there are quite a few things that I don't understand and have not been properly explained to me, like, how did Birmingham ended up being such a healthy place? Because, you know, I asked, "So who were the great leaders? Who were the great founders?" And there was, you know, this or that person, but nothing transcendental. There wasn't the kind of, "Well, you know, when Longfong..." You know, the value of the houses was going down, but nevertheless, you did it. And I think it's a fluky relationship of good, you know, good technical work, good leadership, people getting along and so forth, so. But I was told the other day that probably in Michigan, there's only six good towns. You know, this being one of them, and they gave me a list. And there's six good towns plus the shopping at the airport, that's seven. Okay? And, but, you know, and that's a very low ratio, but that's what it is like in America. Mostly, we've blown it. You know, the suburbs have sucked the energy out. And there are some things, and, you know, in some measure, it's really worth studying what it is that allowed this to be a very good place and now an even better place. So, speaking of, in an orderly way, I'm going to give a few details of what I saw. There's some big things that have happened. A lot of very large empty sites are now filled. And there's a code here that I get some credit for, although I didn't actually write a code, but it's based on our codes. Somebody stole one of our codes and implemented it, which is, I prefer than doing it myself because that's very contentious. I recognize the code. I recognize every line of the code, but I'm always shocked about how high quality it is. You know, what, the standards you're holding everybody to are astonishingly high, the standards of mixed use, triple mixed use. Not just maybe mixed use, but residential, office, shops below. That's really hard to do. It's almost, you know, I've almost said privately, "Didn't you hear how hard that was to do?" You know, "How'd you do that?" And you had the parking garages, which you've used brilliantly. They preexisted and you've used them to incentivize work. And now, one of the things that's happening is you run out of parking. So certainly, the next stage is up. What are you going to do to actually build more parking so you can complete the bits that are left? The other thing that in general terms is really remarkable is how very seldom you run, I've run into what is often have, is called the on/off switch. You allow this or you don't allow it. But here, for example, you have a declension. You know, there's usually a series of settings, like, for example, you need more nightlife and entertainment and so forth. So instead of saying, "No more liquor licenses," or, you know, something like that, you say, "Well, we're going to have a declension of liquor licenses. There's going to be the big one and the little one, and the little one is going to be defined by this many seats and this many bars and this much on the outside and so forth." And that is really intelligent, it's stunningly intelligent, that you actually have that discernment to not have on or off, but let's just have a range, a range of criteria. And then the fact that you stick to it and you're allergic to giving variances, everybody obeys it. That's another remarkable thing. Everybody does it. And that's the way it goes, and we hold tight to it, means it hasn't degenerated. And the developers who normally, you know, once you give them a little bit, they sniff it. "Well, we'll just start." And they know, they all come so humble here. They expect to be turned down. You know, there's a, there is a relationship which I call, most cities, most American cities have a beggar mentality. I am so grateful to have the McDonald's. You know, I'm so grateful to have anything at all that will give them anything they want. You know, we'll suspend, "Oh, yeah, I know where you're not supposed to have a drive-thru, but, yeah, but we want you so badly." And most developers and national retailers just sniff that out. And they give you the lowest quality model. Well, you know that if they want to be here in the first place and you know what to ask, you get the highest quality model. So you're getting very high-quality architecture, you know, a lot of really good urban behavior and so forth. And that's because you've set that standard. And I must admit, it surprised me, but it's almost like you didn't get the news that you have to compromise. But you didn't get the news, and I find it wonderful that you did that. Also, generally speaking, you've done the big things, which I just mentioned, but also the little things. You know, really carefully selected downtown lighting, perfect downtown lighting. You know, carefully selected, there's a lot of small detail here, which is really nice, as well as the big tail of that very great difficulty of turning your parking lot into a park. You know, that was, that was a big deal, and you did it. And so, and so it goes. So, here's the plan, just to remind you, we worked in the downtown and then we added, I believe it was our initiative, we added a tendril going south and one going north because it was pretty evident, you know, what used to be called the gallery district, you know, going north to, name of the park up there?
Booth Park.
Booth Park. Because you brought it up, you said, "What about this? What about this?" So our plan was gradually, had one tentacle that went up and then another tentacle that went down as a gateway. And then we crossed Woodward twice because you wanted to get across, you know, where the Krogers is and so forth. And that was understood, and those are the areas that still remain to be done now. The core is almost finished. You know, there's one big last thing to do, but it's actually not that big compared to what you've done. And then we definitely need to work north and south in the future. And it's just a little bit of trimming, it's not that hard. But then, much to my surprise, you know, I came back and now you have the triangle, this big triangle. That's the next challenge. So there's a new generation, particularly in the planning department, that wants their own challenge. What's, you know, those guys did this, this is our mission. You know, Jana and her very young people, that's their mission. So I was alerted to this. And then there's also the railway district. So there's two other town centers. And because that's what's going to come up in the future, I'd like to talk a little bit about that, okay? The advantage of the old downtown is that it has very, very good bones. Most of the buildings are older buildings, they behave pretty well during the street, you know, going to the street. There was some frontage parking, there was a degeneration. There's no doubt that you had sold out to the car, but mostly, because you had the parking garages very underutilized at the time, you used them to reward development. And so people behaved, okay, amazingly well. And, but across the way, we have, we have another situation. And I can get into some details, some of which interesting, but I'd like to say just one, by the way, I know that the more little things I talk about, the more you'll think, "Oh, he really knows us." But you're just verifying that I know what you know. That's not a good use of my time or your time. It's the big concepts, okay? I very much doubt that the triangle is going to happen, I'm pretty certain it won't, until you build a parking garage, okay? Because the small lots cannot be developed. They're stuck. You're stuck with the fact that the cars that are required don't fit in the small lots. What liberated this downtown is that the cars could be decanted on the parking garages. So you kept your old little urban fabric. If you didn't have those parking garages, developers would have to buy many, many small lots, demolish the buildings to accommodate the cars. And so, I think the next great challenge you have is to build a parking garage here. Okay? Somewhere, there's been some thinking going. And that has to happen quickly. I'm going to gallop to big things now, okay? That has to happen quickly because of a phenomenon that's happening in the rest of the world. People, developers are coming into my, into my office, and they're in a terrible hurry. Very unusual. We're working ourselves to death, you know, because they want this stuff right away. And they all come in and say, you know, real estate is in cycles. It's in eight-year cycles, like that. And he said, they basically say, "We're two years, believe it or not, we're two years into the upward cycle." Now, we've been confused because of a lot of unsold houses and the mortgage problem and all that, but we're two years into the cycle, we have five years left, and we want to be out of here, sold out and finished in five years. That's the orders we get. And if you want to see this happen, and I think it is important that it happen, and it will more or less happen, you have to move quickly. And there's an awful lot of thinking, that we're going to have a public process, and then we're going to set up this or that, public-private partnership, and it's going to take six weeks here and nine months there and so forth. If you do that, the first buildings are going to be, are going to come in, come online at the next recession. And it's going to be fallow, okay? So one of the things to think about is, yes, you're going to do it, you're capable of doing it, you're capable of doing it right, but you also have to hurry. And I think that the people who built the four parking garages back in the 80s, because there was very little nimbyism in the 80s, there was a, there was a, there was a different America. When you come in and says, "We want to grow. We want progress, the future, innovation," people said, "Yeah, let's go." Not just you, but everybody. And now there's a different America that hasn't gone so well, and everything is questionable. And people have asked me 10 times, "Where has that been done before? Where has that been done before?" And that's different. In 1980, people would say, "Where has that been done before?" And I'd say, "Never." And they'd say, "Great. You mean you were pioneering?" And that's a huge change that I see, not here, everywhere. I see a fear of the future, okay, a fear of the future. Sometimes it's founded. Many places have gotten worse, but you haven't. You should actually look at your successes, have confidence in elected leaders, have confidence the way you used to do things, and actually just go for it. And in some ways, doing exactly what you did when you were younger or what your predecessors did. Get those parking garages built right away, great courage, whatever it takes again in terms of loans, but you have to get a parking garage here. And as soon as it does, the market's great, it'll be liberated, and it'll happen. Now, why is it important to do this? For people like Jana and the younger members of the board, they want a mission. They don't want to hear the stories from me, you know, the smoke of battles past, "Oh, you know, 18 years ago, we did this cool stuff and now you have to administer it." They want their own mission. And it's very important, and there are very few young people here, very few, and very young people in the whole charrette, very few. And if you don't have them, you die, okay? You know, there's a next generation. No matter what, with real estate, there's an intergenerational transition. Every one of you will sell your house. Every one of them will sell in a situation that either has high real estate value or is sliding down. And it's very important that this become a cool place, a place that makes sense for the next generation. You know, the people coming up with families and the millennials. Not only for yourself, and by the way, I will speak a little bit about growing old in a place like this, which is very important, but also, you need to be ready so that this is a, this has a good reputation for the next people, for the next generation. When this happens, it'll be different from the downtown. This downtown is very conservative. Yes, it has two or three, or four or five really cool restaurants, but it's very conservative. It looks conservative. Every time somebody actually has a little fun, you know, the condominium above complaints. I've actually heard that you don't want any more entertainment. I went to the movies the first night and I couldn't find dinner at 10:20. You know, I begged myself into a restaurant, and that's pretty disgraceful. You know, and I'm like you, I love being in bed, but I wasn't in bed. I didn't like my hotel, I wanted to be out. And it was, it was really hard to get a meal. And, you know, that spreads. And, you know, the young people, well, you know, you know what they're like, but it's very important that we do this for them. You just have to, just get into the 20-year period, you know, the 20-year-olds will be 38-years-old, okay? So think about the young people as the people we're doing this for. And, and they're different. And among other things, A, bad news, they really genuinely don't like cars. Amazing. I find cars ever better. I was just admiring the new Fords. I love, you know, they don't like it. You know, cars are a tool, they love bicycles and they love transit. And insofar as you provide transit and seriously, and you provide bike lanes and bike racks and so forth, that's a checklist item. It's a checklist item. They want to know that you're doing that. You know, and you can, it doesn't actually matter whether anybody's going to use the bike lanes. They will, but they want to know that you're doing bike lanes. And when you see, as happened recently, that a road rebuilding, I think it was Maple, right? And you actually decide to actually, I don't know whether you exactly widened the lanes, you know, I don't know the details, I don't want to know the details, but I know that bike lanes were actually turned down in exchange for what's essentially faster traffic. That is supremely uncool. And you did it out of actually a fear, which I understand, but it's technically unfounded. Technically, the fear that you have, if you had actually listened to your consultants, doesn't happen. That sends a signal, okay? This place is out of it. Okay? That's just the way it is. By the way, I love cars. I want to give you my credentials as being a member of the generation that's in love of cars. But when I fly, I come in my office, I've had to install a shower because the young people bicycle. And they look at me, and I'm not cool when I drive in my cool car. In fact, the cooler my car, the less cool I am. Okay? And I live with this. And in the future, you really do have to take the transit seriously and the bike lane seriously and don't keep completely, I would say, supporting and easing and continuing the regime of the automobile because it isn't going to be there. And not only, you know, I know we found petroleum and all that. You know, I know, yeah, we're now petroleum. It's not what it's about. It's one of the symbols of basically responsibility to the world. And by the way, in case you guys don't believe in climate change, it doesn't matter because they do. And so they'll buy real estate that actually is ethical in that regard. It has almost nothing to do with science, it has to do with the belief system. And what they're looking for is their mission, okay? You're cutting across their mission. This is the mission of, I can't emphasize that enough, that's the mission of their generation, and you're not respecting it, you know, in the decisions that you're making. You know, it's important. Now, another thing, so much for the young people. Oh, by the way, I should say that one of the most surprising things about young people is that the old traditional houses with the oak cabinets, believe it or not, which I fought so hard to reinstitute traditional architecture again, to actually do a library addition that was compatible, you saw our renderings, you know, they all look arts and crafts, et cetera. They're not turned on by that. They now, okay, are you sitting down? They love 50s and 60s architecture. Sit down, okay? They love aluminum, they love flat roofs, they love cantilevers, all the things that we thought we had recovered from. And if you don't believe me, just look at Architectural Digest, the most conservative architectural magazine, it's like 75% modern. And look also at Dwell, which is thicker than Architectural Digest. You know Dwell, right, at the airport? It's all about modern architecture. It's IKEA, okay? It's Bo Concept that just comes in. And so, bear in mind that in the business we're in, it's really changed. It doesn't matter whether you like it or not. It doesn't matter whether he likes it or I like it, it's what's happening. That's what's happening. I've learned to like it. I want to disclose this. It was a while and I was amazed, but I've learned to like it. This place can never be as good as the downtown and conventional ways. Because here's, here's where the arts and crafts buildings are, here's where the traditional urbanism is. This has to be much edgier. You know, you're going to be seeing buildings in which corrugated metal is actually the cool look. You know, you're going to be seeing, I'm not saying you're ever going to accept graffiti, although if you were really cool, you'd have some pretty high-end graffiti, but I'm not getting there. But there's a lot of stuff, and I would urge you, especially those who are in charge of making decisions, the architectural board and so forth, not to give this place more slack, but to put on, you know, a different, a different aesthetic. And I think you're going to find it really refreshing. You know, they'll come up here sometimes, and you'll go over there sometimes, and you'll be grateful that it isn't just more second-rate downtown, it's first-rate something else, you see? This can never be as good as the existing downtown, but it can be the best at something else. And then, I know it much less, but I think the railway district, at least Mark, when I speak to him, says there's an even greater possibility here of that kind of stuff. You know, the edgy, modernist, metal, lots of glass, et cetera. One of the things I saw today is a developer who gets it. By the way, a developer even older than me who gets it, and he's now constrained with the 35% glass, glass, maximum glass that I wrote. And it's not yielding the cool, glassy look that there is. And so, I think you should actually begin to have a declension of the code, very much in terms of a different aesthetic, and have two codes. You know, and have a place that actually looks different, slightly different, just like you did with the liquor licenses, two codes. And hurry. You basically have five years for the developers to build and get out of here. Now, one little detail, you say we'll never make it. You don't have to build a parking garage before the developers act. You have to guarantee that the parking garage will be built. Once the buyers know that there's going to be parking here, they're able to tell their potential buyers and tenants, "Let's start, get into it because the parking will be there." And Americans do that all the time, particularly in the suburbs. You know, if you've bought a house in a new suburb, you know that you're buying in a sea of mud, and you buy. I say, "How can you buy in a sea of mud?" Because you know where the shopping center's going to be and where the school's going to be, you know, and where the park's going to be, and yet you buy early. So if you can just see fit to within this year, okay, this year, you know, 2014, have a plan that's credible with the parking set and funded and so forth, however you do it, everybody can start. Because everybody I spoke to says, "We'd love to do it, the market's here, but I can't even start." So that's the single most important thing that I can do in terms of that. That's actually the biggest thing that I can say. Now, there's one other thing which is not very flattering to you. There is some distance between the lines that are drawn in terms of what you consider your downtown and what's in the triangle and outside the triangle and what is, and what is to be included and excluded. There's been a huge battle at the periphery of the empire, if you know what I mean. The center's secured, but the people at that edge, you know, and where you draw the line, lines are being drawn out of fear. "Oh, if I'm in there, maybe it won't happen." But what you leave outside is a lot of stuff which is actually palpably and physically not single-family residential. Like, for example, north of Maple, which is not to be considered, is already commercial. So, I said, "Well, you know, what is this? Are these kids? Is this a feel-good system?" And because apparently it is, at least for a while, a feel-good system or a system based on fear, I said, "You've got to work on two lines. There's got to be the line that's politically the triangle." There's gotta be the line that's politically the triangle. But honestly, you can't really believe that this is not in the triangle, right? You know, there is a gorilla in the room, up there you can't believe that's in it. You know, up to the north, there's all these battles that are being done almost like medieval theology. You know, but the physics, physically, it's not what we're looking at, and I found that very obnoxious and childish. Okay, really like, oh, if you draw the line, you think it won't happen? You think because we're not looking at it? So that, at the very least, I wanna recommend that you have two lines. You have the fictional line that allows you to sleep, and then the real line, which you're actually planning to. Because honestly, I say this, I know this was left out, and there's maybe good reasons. But how can anybody calculate parking and density and anything when fifty percent of the land is, is not being considered? You just can't get anything right, it's a complete waste of time. You know, how can you ever design a street which is one-sided? You know, even though currently up there it's commercial on both sides already, and yet that's in the triangle, well, what's supposed to be on the other side? Don't you see that streets work on both sides? The city is perceived on both sides, it develops organically on both sides, it's already happening on both sides, but somebody drew a line on the street. Now, if you want to do that, that's fine, but the professionals here have to go past it. So you're gonna end up with the fiction of two lines. The real physical one that, you know, the real people are dealing with, and then the ones that make you feel good and you force your politicians to draw. But I wanna draw attention that this is not up to your standard of intelligence and open-mindedness. You know, you really have to confront what's there and what's gonna happen. Sorry, but not everything you've done is wonderful. Uh, the, in terms of the north, there are a lot of little things that can be done. By the way, that, that area in eighteen years has transformed itself from Gallery Row to Pretty Doll Stuff Row. Bunch of doctors and so forth, and is now becoming cool again. Which is actually a pretty good lesson of urbanism. You know, nothing's stable, it either gets better or worse. And the breakthrough was this market that is happening, to the extent that it's, it's kind of absurd to call it now the gallery. What do we call it, the gallery district?
Gallery Row.
Gallery Row, and now it's actually the market district. And that market happens in a certain place, and there's a parking lot, there's a parking lot that goes behind the strip shopping center, and there's actually the call to connect from the other side, from Wimbledon, is that Wimbledon? Okay, the Wimbledon connection and so forth. There's a bunch of things in play that are kind of urgent. If you build that, a shed for that market, you can't think of it separately from the parking garage that you must build and the connection from Wimbledon that must be considered. You see, there are three things, and they're all in the same piece of geography. And if you let that, here. Over here. Right here, the market happens here. This is your only chance for a parking garage. That's your only connection from the neighborhood over there if you wanna walk in. It's all happening at the same spot. If, for example, you build a covered market there that precludes the parking, or you build a parking garage that precludes the crossing, you've basically blown it, and possibly permanently. So that must be considered, there's a lot of pressure of that. And that's the big move there, that's the big thing that must be done now, because I think, I think three parts are moving separately. Okay? And, uh, and then there's small things that can be solved, and I'm not gonna go through everything I heard, but there are little problems that can be solved, I understand. The crossing, however, is one that has, holds a lesson, you know, a general lesson. I don't think this street is that uncrossable, I've done it already six or eight times. But it's not, it's a slightly humiliating experience. It's perfectly doable, but you feel like, okay. So, uh, you're not gonna fix Woodward. It's twenty-five miles, thirty-five, I don't know how long it is. But you're not gonna fix Woodward if you think of it as one single, the way the traffic engineers think of it, as one single kind of pipe. You know, the way that you would design a traffic sewer. You keep the pipe constant and it flows. Okay, that's not the way, there are humans involved here. And there are different context zones. And if you look at each one, like what is Woodward there on Poppleton Park, which is basically rural on both sides? And then you move here and you say, well, that's that, but over here we have to cross. Right? And then we go further down and we say, over here, there's our gateway. Just to give you three examples, those are three entirely different conditions, and they need to be designed separately. There are three contexts, and this is one, and the next one is the next, and the next one's the next, and they're different. You know, for example, the crossing, the care that you have to, that you have to provide for humans at the crossings, at the four or six or, I think, believe you're gonna need five crossings in the end, pedestrian crossings. Those take a great deal of care. And by the way, the landscaping of the rest of it, the hell with it. Literally, the cars don't care, everybody's stupefied. They're doing like this, they're bored to death, you know, they're not gonna appreciate it. And so just concentrate on those elements, really design them. The most exciting is the one here at the bottom. And, what, what did we used to call that, that area? Did it have a name?
Five, no, but it's the area south of the five-five-five building.
Okay. South of the five-five-five building, the five-five-five building, which, okay. Look at what's happened here, do you see this area which is the gateway to Birmingham? A bunch of traffic engineers have been here slicing and dicing, look at that. Chew, 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 like that, like that, it's all sliced and diced. It's little bits of traffic trajectory. This entire triangle, from that building here, the C B, uh, Walgreens, to this side is one enormous landscape design project. A single piece. Not a little this and a little that, a little the other, a single piece that actually you enter almost like a filter and you say, ah, I am someplace. And then you have the five-five-five building, that when it was done was very cool, and then it spent thirty years being very uncool. And guess what is now cool again? It's very, very cool. This is what the young people like. Now, the building is quite a good piece of architecture, but it's, it's actually blighted by really bad glass technology, which is typical of nineteen seventy. Now glass is beautiful. Okay, glass is, you know, that's one thing modern architecture has done. Beautiful thin mullions, transparency. Just think of the Apple Store. You know what that's like, the thing is just so light and it glows. I think that the tower or the branding that I've been hearing about for eighteen years may actually be the addition here to the tip of the five-five-five. You add a, as, as the building gets re-glazed, which it will be re-glazed, it has to be, that that glazing be brought forward, then an additional building be built here, like a prow. By the way, even the bad, uh, um, what are they called, those buildings that do triangles?
Flatiron.
Even the bad flatiron buildings of the world are always memorable. You know, you can, you, I know one in Peoria that is two stories and third rate, and it's still the most memorable building down, of course, is the one in New York. You have a flatiron building that if you can actually come with a prow, allow the extension of this building, a full height with a prow, glassed, glowing at night. Just glowing, not lit on the outside, that's the old way. Just glow from the inside at night, and since you mostly arrive dark because of your unfortunate latitude. You know, where it's dark early, you will actually see the symbol, aha! The landscaping, I'm somewhere, by the way, this building, I understand, is seen from two miles away. So it just glows there, which wakes you up in time to make the turn at Maple. It's really a two-part thing. Because one of the last questions I received just a few hours ago, I said, shouldn't we build really tall buildings in Maple? On both, Maple, right? Yeah, on both sides, like our original plan. You know, we're gonna make us, make a, an intersection, and now I believe that it's not even gonna be noticed. When I see how big Maple is and the big buildings you have already built, no one notices. That basically, you, you will notice if you slowed up and you've been alerted that you're in Birmingham, but it's gonna take something at the, at the scale of the automobile to be noticed, and then you'll turn in, and then you'll be oriented, and go to the, all, all the good places that, that put you on, on the map, literally. So I think it's incredibly good luck. You know, I was asked to look at this again. And what I was told to do, well, you know, this might become the furniture, uh, sec, district. And I basically, I couldn't stay awake, oh yeah, well, that's, that'll do it. That'll put you on the map. But it's not gonna be that, so there's this tremendous luck that this is now up for redevelopment, for refacing. You see, that's the incredible timing. It's up for refacing, and this building can actually become a real winner. Okay, now about the bottom, just technically. The, the bottom doesn't work for retail because of, of the split levels, and, uh, it'll never work for retail. Yes, you can shove retail in it, retail is already shoved in it. But basically, it is structurally incapable of first-rate retail because of the split levels. You should allow them to have townhouses. Okay, on the first floor, I know that the code is all about retail on the first floor, but actually, the only thing that'll work here are some very cool first-floor townhouses. Really cool. Which, by the way, are pretty lively. You know, somehow, there's an obsession here that retail's the only really great thing. Well, yes, but there are beautiful townhouse cities. You know, Georgetown, London. And I think townhouses would be very good, and what happens is they don't eat up the parking of the furniture row on the other side. So, that would be, for me, that would be something that I would change in the code. This is a very special problem building that requires special treatment. You know, with the height and everything. But I think you'd be, you know, if, at least the way I imagine it, it would be incredibly exciting. Now, there's all the cool stuff that's happening, like there's gonna be a wonderful restaurant underneath his deck and so forth. You know? And one of the things I was on the architects is, don't do something that's comfortable in the sense of, oh, let's just marry Old England. You know, this is a, this is a building of a certain style, and it should actually be what it is, really cool. Okay? So, so much for this building, but what I would do in the south, okay, just to summarize, down here in the south, I would take this as an enormous landscape design piece from one set to the other. Work with the, with the artists, work with the landscapers, work with the traffic engineers, and then take that building for all it's worth and make it, make it a flatiron building, a glass flatiron building going on that glows. You know, and I think, I think you'll love it. And I think actually the younger people would love it too. And so that's, that's the one idea I have for down here. So, I don't know what you were expecting, a series of little things, but there's really one big thing that would matter, okay? Now, uh, in terms of north, I said that one big thing is, um...
You might wanna talk about the crossing.
Yeah, okay.
For the Triangle District, you know, Haynes Crossing?
Yes, uh, well, this is a little bit less, but there are plans that happen here. Okay, this'll bring up, this'll bring up an issue that, which is about the parks. Okay? The Haynes, the triangle here needs a park. And if you've ever driven around there, like I was, you're always disoriented. There's no, am I here, am I there, I'm in the third place and so forth. If you put a triangular park in the middle, here, you get immediately oriented, the way that your Shane Park does for you. And there's almost no open space. And that's already been negotiated very kindly, it seems, that, uh, Walgreens is actually, they're prepared to do something and actually give some green. Now, with all these open spaces, the edges are terribly important, you gotta feed the edges, right? With activity. But Shane is actually connected by, not only by, by Bowers underneath, Bowers underneath the bridge, but also Haynes. Okay? That's the one that actually reaches the green, Bowers doesn't. And, uh, that pair, those two, you now have a light in Bowers. Okay? If you have two lights and they work exactly as a pair, they do not impair traffic. They just work together. Okay, so you can actually ask, learn this, you can ask for pairs of lights. And there's a couple of places where you maybe can use pairs, including at the north. And we can actually draw that, we've talked about it. But, uh, the way I see the crossings is probably three pairs. You know, and they'll work, and they really, they will not impede, they won't impede traffic, and that'll get you to the other side, which seems to be so important. Parking garage here as soon as possible so that the developers get going. Square. Demand a really excellent redo of the, of the five-five-five building. Up there, do the parking garage, I spoke about that, et cetera. Now, let's talk about this, uh, this green. Uh, actually, let's go to the town center, to the existing town center. Okay? I'm not going to summarize all the things that have been achieved, but I bet none of you remember how much has been done, how many were empty sites, et cetera. And I think that's the, did I mention already you should do a book? Right, okay. But, the great achievement was actually the park. Okay, this Shane Park. Shane Park is terrific and dead. And it's dead because what gives public spaces in America their vitality are the edges. The edges feed the park. And you can actually tinker with the pavement and the trees and this and the playground, but it's really underutilized. There are several opportunities to do great things in the park, for the edge. One is, here's a single-story building surrounded by the Townsend Hotel. When this gets redeveloped, and it might be very soon, everything about it should feed food and drink and light and vitality and nightlife and breakfast and everything you want to the park. Okay, this has to go there. By the way, there's already, there's a very nice bakery that no one knows about. Okay, boom, that, you know, that should go in. Okay, up there, there's the dreadful AT&amp;T building. And of course, the answer when you talk to any utility where there's a railway AT&amp;T, you're beneath their radar screen. You know, and you got a sort of a third-rate executive that is just there to stop you from asking questions. But you should just keep pressuring that, and I would alert you that sooner or later, probably sooner, AT&amp;T is gonna want something from, from, from this city. You know, they're gonna wanna put a cable in or change something or get a license something. When it does, say, yeah, but in exchange for your, opening your mind about this building, and maybe letting us have a frontage which is like an extension of the existing cafe, or just telling us, just tell us, what's the future of this building? How long is that out-of-date machinery gonna be there? You know? They're probably afraid because it's polluted in some way, they don't want you to hear anything or even think about it. Okay, but you need to know what's there. And, uh, so that you can plan, because that's a really important corner. Right now, Martin Street's dead. Probably, it's, 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 isn't it ironic? One of your important streets is one of the least pleasant. Just walk up and down it, it's the street you don't wanna be in. So that building's a corner, and then there's the open parking lot in the back of what is gonna be the West Elm. Do you see that, see it there? Open parking lot? Is that the best corner, you know, and it's, it's just being wasted by something like eight cars in an abandoned loading dock? And I think if we had been, if you, because I was alert, if you had been alert, you said, no, no West Elm until you actually make something that gives energy to the park. Okay, that's kind of a lost opportunity because now it's, it's leased. Then you go to the other side to the library where we spent a lot of time. Could you get to the library? Okay, this library just crashed and burnt. And I'm not gonna say that was a bad thing. But, because this is political, I'm gonna spend some detail on this. The old library's glorious, and I made the mistake of saying last time, and I wanna be clear, that you should enter off Martin. Right, you should restore the entrance, that this thing here was the result of incredibly arrogant architect who wanted you to notice his building instead of being in the back. I'm not gonna do a back building, I want this to be the front, close the door. What I hadn't realized is how good that reading room was. And if you have the door in the front like I suggested, you're gonna lose the reading room. So that was a horrible idea of mine. Particularly because now you have these magnetic devices and, you know, it isn't just that the kids are coming in and the door opens and it's cold. It's like, entering the library is, is kind of like, you know, it's a security experience. So that should clearly remain what it is now, just, there shouldn't be a controversy because that's, that's built into our old plan, is you gotta do it. Now, at the same time, when we were here many years ago, I really disliked this building. Because it was everything that was wrong with architecture, they did an addition that was not contextual, it has nothing to do with it, the architect stole the front, typical of the arrogance, you know, the whole drill. It's probably on... Did, we have videos eighteen years ago? It's probably on video tape. You know? But actually, now that things have changed and we're all much more sophisticated, this is actually a brilliant building. And it's kinda seedy, but it's a brilliant building, but not all of it is so brilliant. Okay, for example, this box here, this, the show is this, this, this quadrant here, the entrance show. You know, the big overhang, the column, the ramp, all that stuff. If you clean it and make it nice and re-clad the concrete, you know, the horrible concrete, cheap concrete steps and all that, and the kind of the stadium railings, this can be very nice. This should be redone. This, this square here, you know, the, the, the second addition, which is not by the same architect, that can go, and you can get to work on that right away. And do keep it open to the beautiful new park, okay? Keep this and then be ready to take this down and have most of your capacity here. But don't make that one single bill to give to the, to the residents. You know, cut it down into several phases. And if you do a very good job at the beginning with this and this and a few ideas I'm gonna talk about, you will be, people will trust you. And they'll see your amazing job you did with the library, and you, then you'll get the second and the third funding. At the moment, you know, there isn't a very good record of spending twenty-one million dollars. You know, and people, I think correctly, didn't wanna do it. You have to prove that you can do it sequentially. So let's talk about this. As I was looking at this, and I was saying, could we actually increase, put a terrace here at the level of the first landing so that people can be outside enjoying the park? A little bit above so you see it and remember that people like coffee with their books. And I would actually, forgive me for saying this, some people like Scotch and cigars with their books. And some people like their dogs to come to the library. You know, and things like that, which are very humane and very much what people are like. And the, the idea of a library as a kind of Walmart of books, which is more or less what it looks like now, is not, you know, you, you need to bring people in. By the way, you're up against tremendous forces in the library. You know, the books are shutting down, the bookstores are shutting down. So it's got to be that, that, that famous kind of complete experience in which you look forward not only to the book, but to the experience of reading and the experience of being there two or three. So I looked at this and then I said, actually, the single worst thing, even in the old days, isn't this library. It's the permanent tent that was there twenty years ago. It was twenty years ago. And it's not even, and it's a tent with little fakey arches, like come... It's amazing. So, once you've proven that this is actually a permanent requirement, and you should start getting serious about making a permanent building, and when you do it, design both sides together. Okay, this is a plaza. You see how this is a plaza? And by the way, the people who are here might get a lot out of being there and vice versa. When I was hearing, who goes here? And I heard, who goes there? And who goes here? Same people. And it's actually the administration that doesn't get along. But the people are the same people. So I think it's time to start playing ball, get rid of your territory, and actually, even if this is built much later or not at all, from here forward, this should be conceived as one design and actually go into the park as a single design. Because one of the things that somebody alerted me to is absolutely true, when you come down the sidewalk, you hit the grass. It's not even well-designed. And that's because you were so concerned about this being a street, you forgot that pedestrians may actually cross. Have you noticed that? Okay, so this needs to be redesigned every way. And I think that one commission, one piece of urban design is a really good piece of work that takes this together. And you have a plaza and a park. Plaza and a park, they both play different roles, they do different things. I think this would be fantastically good and all the people here would then feed energy to the park. So now we have a couple of ideas for the north, right? We have a couple of ideas from the east, which is this building. This building that's being redone, the Townsend Building is gonna be redone. And then you have this, this piece here. So, that was a, that was a, uh, what did we call it? Ban shell, amphitheater ban shell, et cetera. Which unfortunately for this kind of thing, it's not used that often. It's nice-looking and so forth. And then I was thinking, wow, you left us a tray of parking. Which I don't mind so much, remember, this was all parking before. A tray of parking, I said, you know, that's a nice place to sit. It's shaded, it's nice, but Americans don't hang around anywhere where they're not being fed or they're drinking. It's a national trait. So, instead of categorically saying, no food trucks, which is uncharacteristic of you, you say, some food trucks, some of the time, some places, okay? This is perfectly made for four food trucks. Just parking up against it, different price points, the vegetarian one, the sausage one, the pizza one. You know, so that, you know, the Germans, the Italians, the hippies and the, everybody has something to do. And you can test them, and there's some very good food trucks, and they just come in for lunch. Where a lot of people can't afford restaurants, okay? Don't underestimate that all these wonderful restaurants, you don't get out of there for less than sixteen to twenty dollars. It's sit-down, which means you're, you're eradicating young people into lower incomes. Or, I don't know whether they're brown bagging or staying back in the cafeteria, but this would bring them out. So I, I would really insist, this is, and by the way, if it doesn't work out, if cockroaches spread or leprosy, I don't know why you think the problem with food trucks is. You know, or there's gonna be a collapse of the economy, just stop the food trucks. But stop talking about it, just try it. You know, give it a six-month try and see whether it activates this end of the park. And I think with this, 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 and this, you know, within a few years, you'd have an active park. You know, with younger, you know, and I'm sure this is gonna be more expensive. And I think this is gonna be probably more seniors, and there's gonna be younger people, and of course, the, the families are over there. And the edge conditions should actually feed them, like that should be a place where the kids can actually eat whatever they eat. You know, that would be, you know, kind of kid food, sophisticated food, you know, cigars and whiskey. And then something that the twenty-year-olds with that tremendous incomes can come and eat. And then that's a park that's really intelligently programmed, because this beautiful park is really dead. And I've seen it at maximum, and it's pretty good, but it's a huge park and that would fill it. And I think that would really fulfill its destiny. And that's, none of this is hard to do, none of this. Okay, now at the end, there's Bates. Could we look at Bates? Okay, so Bates was actually, was considered when we presented. By the way, I can't keep looking, I keep looking at these things, did you know these sites were empty? And dead and everything, just amazing how much you've done, it's really, it's really quite remarkable. But, one of the more glorious ideas is that you have a really beautiful park where the Rouge River is, connecting to a park system that takes you all the way up to what would be the market. And what you have at the end, once you get past the beautiful church, is a horrible parking lot no one has ever crossed. Because it says, don't come in, it's, this is a drag. You know, and if you get to the other side, you're gonna fall off the edge anyway, and, you know. So you have a back in what is essentially an incredible connection to a plaza. Now, we've spoken of a plaza, you have a plaza which is paved and a certain activity, terrace, you know, chairs. You have a, a square and then a park. Plaza, square, park, you have the full, the full range. So what do you do with this park? Well, this is city-owned property. And you have in your charter that you can't ever sell city-owned properties, in your charter. And I'm gonna get back to that. It's very important that something happened here. And here's what I propose. Because you do not trust essentially government enough to allow them to sell anything that the city owns, because as soon as you do that, they'll be selling the parks, won't it? You know, you, you give them an inch and they'll be selling your parks. So no, nothing can actually ever change. So, and there's other bits of ground, could you go back to where the hotel was gonna be? Okay, there are little bits of, there are little bits of ground, for example, this is a municipal parking lot for four cars or something. You know, that doesn't make any sense, it could have been a really great store. And by the way, if the hotel ever comes here, which is wonderful, the Hunter House Hotel, maybe Hunter House can be there. You know, in that, in that municipal triangle, just with feeding activity, that's where I mostly eat. You know, totally cool place, right? So, so, but this can't be loosed because of that rule. So here's the proposal I have. That you put forth to the citizens, then municipal land can be sold so long as it's paved. Okay, so they can't sell any park, it's got to be already paved, like this or that. Second, that all the money that's made gets reinvested in the purchase of additional park. And that that park be green. Okay? And possibly you can even add that you actually purchase more than you lose, so you end up with a net addition. That allows you to maneuver to get rid of these little slivers of pretty unsophisticated stuff and buy the park next door. Another one behind the Walgreens? You budget it up so that you can actually get a real park that actually makes sense. And I think if you constrain it just enough for that, only paved area, it gets reinvested as open space, which is then green, in at least the same amount, that should be able to get through. You know, unless somebody is beginning to sort of, you know, if you wanna sort of elicit fear and loathing and all that, fine, you can do that. But this is pretty, this isn't that hard to do. And I think you need to do it because we're now talking about trimming here. It's little bits of stuff. Now, let's go back to Bates. Okay? There are people that would do this. There are five developers, four developers, ten developers that would do this. What they're not gonna do is you're not gonna have an RFP and say, come on in. And then when they come in, you're gonna torture them by saying, please meet all the citizens and then try to guess right what it is that we want. Because developers have had it with that, and I know that, I'm in that business. They've been tortured enough, they'll just go somewhere else and do something else. They don't wanna go through that experience. What I suggest you do is that you do a preliminary design that you all agree with. And I would suggest that you do a liner building, a series shops in the first floor and condominiums above that follow here and follow here and follow here, so that there's a street that surrounds the edge, goes around the beautiful church, which is beautiful front, side, and back. This, this, this building has no back, it's as good as anywhere. You don't frighten this house, you know, because you're not putting a parking garage or anything against it. You basically have a street which is superior to what's there now. Because right now, this person looking at a parking lot, you have a beautiful street coming around like that. And the reason I push it so much over here, like that, is that the play here is to add your fifth parking garage. You know, the one that you're still missing to complete your downtown? And so part of the package that the developers have to bid for is the extension of this parking garage. Right off that ramp for hundreds and hundreds of cars. Okay, including, by the way, cars in the first floor. You still keep this parking, see this parking lot? That stays there, it's below. So you still have the same relationships with the church and so forth. And you basically have a great number of additional cars. And remember, the building that I propose here doesn't have that much program, it's a thin building. So, let, I'm just making this completely up. But let's say you make a parking garage of five hundred cars and you only eat up a hundred accommodating this, you, you're left with four hundred. And this is not about making money for the city, this is about getting your last parking garage. Because that four hundred, or however many it is, allows you to complete, to complete the city. You know, it's just enough. And then at that point, you basically have reached carrying capacity, and I'd say that downtown Birmingham is more or less finished. And then, that's it now. And if more people wanna come, they're not gonna find the parking. So you'll never overload it, because the only way to control carrying capacity is with parking. You know, so this doesn't become like the, the center of everything and for the whole region. They'll have to go somewhere else, they'll go to the Triangle, they'll go to another city or something. So at some point, you really do wanna shut down the, the parking because then you keep it down. And this is the last, this is the last piece. And what I would do, just to get the best possible developers, is make a design and have them bid on the design. So they don't go through a process that might take years and frustrate you and occupy a lot of your time. This is what we want, who wants to bid? Your market is strong enough that you don't have to be a beggar, you can actually just write what you want. And I don't know whether it's gonna end up that they'll pay you nothing, but you end up with four hundred cars. You know, I don't know how, how, how it works out, but the thing is to minimize your cost, seal off this terrible thing, give access to the park and finish your downtown. It's like you get four things for one. And then hurry, because remember, there's only five years before you get the next recession. And then, who knows what happens in the next after that one? Because the next, next one, I think is gonna be awful. So, but you finish, you finish downtown. And that's not that hard to do, you've done harder things. It's just, it's just this little catch that you can't sell municipal land, but so long as you get as much, who cares? So that's the proposal we have here. What else have I, this guy, Mark keeps track of everything, I forget, what, what else is there?
Hi, Market Street Parking, um, do you wanna talk about Maple Road?
What about it?
Four to three.
Oh, I did already. Yeah, yeah, I think you, you didn't make a terrible mistake, Maple Road.
The Woodward Crossing, you just, you talked about the two at the bottom, what are the other?
Okay, I, I know the two at the bottom because I've walked them. Okay, the two at the bottom is a pair. I know there's one up there, which I mentioned already, that gets you across, okay? And that, right, this one at Wimbledon. And you see how well, you know how, you see how completely you... And by the way, the one up there is not important except for cars, because it doesn't lead anywhere. On the other side, it's just somebody's, somebody's parking garage. By the way, you do need a traffic circle there. Okay, partially because people are coming in too fast. They haven't gotten the news that they're no longer on the highway. Have you noticed that they come too fast? Once they hit a traffic circle, they know they're in an urbanized area. But also, it allows the people who are driving north and are now making illegal turns, right? You know, you can't turn back. And it allows them to go up, turn around and come back, which... This is at Oak, yeah, at Oak, just a circle at Oak. Right now, by the way, that's typical. Oak has, uh, has enough land for the traffic circle. If any of these four sites redeveloped, you've lost that, it's gone. So there's some things that are time-sensitive. And this isn't very hard, hard to do, but it's one of these easy solutions that, that works. So a little bit of planning here, this very light touch. This, this, that, and that, go. Perfect, okay? And the other one is a light touch too, they're, these are small, we're just finishing this. What else?
Pierce Street Parking Deck, north side, south side, that stacked the additional levels.
Oh, yeah, okay, so, Pierce Street. Okay? This was conceived to have two additional decks. The cost that has come in is approximately thirty-two thousand dollars per car. Uh, that's twice the cost of each, if you were to build a new, right? Which is maybe sixteen or so. But, if you were to build a new, you have to start from the beginning and take a lot of expensive land out of commission. So if you were to build a new parking garage somewhere else, you're actually probably paying more than the thirty. So what I would do is go ahead and do it, I think it's a bargain to complete this. Now, you might also consider that these, that, to have liner buildings here and there. Right? Because, you know, what you're doing is you're opening up to a parking garage. These are not wonderful places, either in the north or the south. It is possible that the sale of these for not full development, but partial development, would complete the retail, right? So you have four-sided retail and you get, and the money you get from this can either go to buy the park next door or to build this deck. Okay? But the general spirit that I'm talking about is you have a lot of chess pieces here. There's, there's this and that. And if you're a real chess player in urbanism, you move them around, you play with all you have, instead of having single issues. Look, you know, you're thinking about one thing, oh, that deck is gonna cost sixty-four thousand dollars or thirty-four per car, therefore, we can't do it. But if you actually look in terms of, if we were to build those two hundred cars somewhere else, how much would that cost? And could we actually tie it in to actually doing something decent on this end and the other end? And then you get the money for this and take it over there and buy the park on the other side? If you really play chess on the full board, you can actually get things done. And I think that the dumbing down of the discussion to a single bumper sticker, which has happened a little too much recently, gives the wrong answer. It's, it's really not that simple, it's not an on-off switch. You have a lot to play with. And I think what we were doing, and perhaps what I'm contributing here is, this isn't an isolated thing, this is really, it's pretty cool what can happen here. So that's, that's the other thing I'd do. By the way, compared to the people who built this deck in the first place, that's nothing. This is so easy. You know, I don't know whether anyone remembers when these were built, but it's almost like that was a different culture that could actually do great things. And you shouldn't forget that what we're asking, everything I'm talking about here is quite easy. It's just very easy. These are small incremental low-cost projects. So, so that's it, I, have I forgotten something else? Okay. Okay, transit is a checklist item for the next generation. They actually, it's one of these ethical things that you do, they ask for it. It's happening all over, even LA. There's a, it's one of the things you do, it's what cities do. Sometimes it makes no sense at all, like in Detroit, but they're gonna do it. Because that's, you know, that's what they're looking for, the next, the next generation. And by the way, watch Detroit, fantastic things are happening there, the young people have come back in. You can't do that here, I wish you could. I wish you could actually say, come on, young people, your land value's too high. Okay, just too high. It's, we, we try, I, I actually spoke two days ago and I said, it's all about the young people, bring them in. And then I began, began to see it's really not about the young people, that's, the cat's out of the bag. Every piece of real estate in Birmingham is too high for them. But let's talk about the old folk. Okay? The ideal about the old folk is that they can stay in their houses, that's the ideal. Most of the houses of your vintage don't have bedrooms in the first floor. They just don't. They just don't. And I don't know what, why that was, but, but people seem to. There should be a categorical right to build a bedroom and a, and a handicap bath in the first floor in all the houses. Just categorical. Because that allows people, as they get old, and the first thing that goes is, you know, you don't want to climb stairs. Yes, you do, you can, but you don't want to. And what happens is you're seeing a lot of, a lot of stuff being abandoned, people moving out of houses they love because they can't climb the stairs. How many times have you heard that? Well, I actually can't climb the stairs anymore. Master bedroom in the first floor should be a civil right. The right to stay at home requires that. The second civil right is that if you can actually, there's an awful lot of empty bedrooms in Birmingham. Huge number of empty bedrooms, because the kids are gone, it's demographic. And if you can actually have the ability to rent the upstairs, or build the garage apartment, you can either get your income supplement, which you may not need, but some of you might, but you can also get the caregiver to live at home. You know, and the caregiver may just be the person that checks in that you're taking your pills, I mean, nothing, or somebody who cleans up. I'm into completely that generation. My mother, my grandmother, everybody is, and I have an outbuilding, it's worked wonderful, wonderfully with a caregiver, you know, it's a complex, this idea of the single-family house, you need something more complex now. It's a more complex thing. Maybe the kid comes back, maybe the son or daughter comes back, maybe the caregiver lives. But I think all of this, and by the way, this, this rule was just passed in England. There's just an absolute right to build a bedroom in the first floor. And actually, it's not even a right, it's actually required. All future housing has a bedroom in the first floor, because they know where it's going, you know? And they want people to stay at home and be happy, and not be decanted into very expensive, very expensive places. So, that's the least you can do. Now, other stuff is not design, it's management, like, can I actually get to the doctor, can I walk to things, can I walk to the library? All that stuff is, is different. But that one, I think, is something you should really consider. Even if you eat up your backyard, whatever, it's really important that you are able to do that. Uh, I know some of your lots are very tight, they really are, but there should be the right to this, it should be easy to do, there should be contractors that can... You know, in England, there's now, there are contractors, that if you have a townhouse in London, will, without disturbing you, build two additional floors underneath. You know, and it's price-fixed. Three hundred thousand pounds, you get two more floors, done. Okay? One of the things you might develop here is a kind of industry that actually says, you know, the new bedroom is, you know, sixty-five thousand dollars, done. And then you get, you get this moving, moving with the demographics. You know, it just makes so much sense, and it's, it's really pretty simple. And, uh, what else, what else like that? No?
Those are the big ones.
Okay, so lots of praise, loves and kisses, I love Jana, you know? That kind of thing. Oh, your retail is really good. The people that are recruiting your shops, you know, the shops you're getting are amazing. They're, they're national tenants that actually look like local, unique stores. I've never seen that before, but it's very clever. You know, so you get really competent merchandising, really competent financing, without actually going with the, with the sort of the dopey nationals everybody have. You know, you have a whole row, and I think that idea that you go after the small, you know, the small national merchants, is, is really, has made a wonderful place, that's, that's really well-done. So, I, I think that the management district, the downtown management district, also, PSD is, is doing a great job as well. And as you probably know, the place is very well-maintained and very well-policed, and, you know, there's, there's that that you know, you're getting very good services. That's, that's, that's actually going very well. So, okay, I, nobody believes me, but I don't think your trees are growing.
It's cold in the weather.
It's cold, and this, and that, there are lots of excuses, but I think you should have a real technical person say, why aren't these trees growing properly? I've been looking at them, I suspect there's a root ball problem. And, right? And then I think that also, there's one street at least, which is, uh, which is Martin, that is too wide, too, uh, it's just too wide, the buildings aren't there, the buildings are all set back, that's where the civic buildings like this one are, and that one really needs trees fast, big trees. And since you're a rich little town, why are you buying such little trees? Pathetic. So, uh, so I would say, yes, I was disappointed generally by your trees, because you're, you can see how important the big trees that you do have, how important they are. You know, I think that this, you have a particularly good street here, um, could I, over here? Yeah, okay. Pierce is a very, is a, is really your nicest street, and among other things, the trees are big. It's just very important, American urbanism depends on trees. It isn't like the Italian, you know, tight buildings, urbanism. American urbanism depends on streets, on treats for a special definition, and I think you're planting them too small. I also think that, and this is a technical issue, I think you, that you're not, the trees aren't going to grow unless you have more porous pavement, so that the roots can spread. Now, you've had a bad experience with the brick popping up, and I know that that happens, but there's another, and don't do porous concrete, that just cracks up, it's horrible. But there, there, there are new pav, pavings and so forth. Actually, they're called cobblestones. Have you heard of that? And the cobblestones don't pack properly, and they let, they, they're on sand, they let the thing through, they look pretty good when they're shaky, and when they are not, and when they shake too much, a guy comes out with a little spatula and a bucket of sand. They, have you ever seen that done? Public Works comes out with a bucket, and digs it out, and sets it back, and then they have a cigarette. Okay? And that's, it's not a big technical problem, you've had, you've been so burnt by your brick stuff, your ornamental brick, that you don't want to hear about it. But the cobblestone is the way the Europeans grow their great trees, and they have a climate as bad as yours. If you go to North German city, Scandinavian cities, why are their trees growing and not ours? Because our trees are in little boxes like this. And remember, the trees don't grow, the trees, the, the roots won't grow unless there's water for them to, basically to get at, and when you, when you pave them the way you have, for maintenance, whatever, uh, they're not going to grow. And I think that's ultimately the problem, you really confront that. Because, you know, I built, I build projects up north, and the trees grow, they're, they're properly done. And I think, okay, like, everything I say today, just try it. Try it for one street, see whether people are tripping and falling, keep track of incidents and death, you know? Keep track of lawsuits, I said, Jana, you got to keep a spreadsheet here about all the